... No? Okay. All right. The other beginning reading of information is public comment. So, please, if anyone wants to do public comment, please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on this meeting agenda. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual may request an item to be placed on a future agenda. Are there any public comments? Okay. After all that legalese, let's do the ball, the happy thing, okay?
This is from Grant at Falmouth High School. My teacher challenges me by allowing me to learn at my own pace. This is from Peter at East Falmouth. Our PTO helps us by raising money.
That was a perfect one.
Tell him to cry.
That gray one?
Yeah. This is from Jackson at Lawrence. Say what we are -- my teacher encourages us to say what we are thinking while being respectful to others. When a teacher gives respect to that students, they help, they will be more willing to be respectful back.
These are awesome. Great comments. Now, we love hearing from the students. We have to say that. Okay. Our mission statement?
Okay. The mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they are engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue their goals and foster lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our mission are continuous improvements for students, teachers, staff, and administrators, enthusiasm for teaching and learning, collaboration in teaching and learning. The role of the school committee is threefold: to write policy, to approve the operating budget, to hire the superintendent, and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the district.
Thank you, Natalie.
You're welcome.
So, the first item on our agenda is to act on a $500 donation from Exxon for the Science Department. I'm not sure to -- Christine is going to speak on this, okay?
Is this better here? Is this better here with Mike?
Wherever you feel comfortable.
It'll make it work.
So, this is an annual donation that we've gotten for the past five years, I believe, because we have two parents at the high school who both work for Exxon Mobil gas stations, and they applied for this grant for us, or donation, for us through the Exxon Education Foundation. And it's to use to buy supplies for the San Robert High School.
Okay. Before we discuss it, I'd like a motion to accept this donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Brothers?
I just could make a comment. I think that's great that we have two parents that are willing to go through the process to apply for the grant, and that Falmouth has benefited from that. So, thanks to the parents and thanks to us.
We send them the thank you letter every year.
Yes, yeah.
I have a question, and I think we've talked about this, like we talked about it last year, about the difference between the grant versus a donation.
Okay.
And I don't know if, maybe we could just have some clarification around that, and I'm not looking to you right now for that clarification.
It's too bad Patrick's not here because we have to have a discussion ourselves.
Okay. Lori can answer that.
So, the question with, so grants do not need to come before you because they're grants. It's what we write for, and they support something because we're asking, it's competitive, right? To do. Donations are from individuals that would like to provide, you know, resources to the district. And so, those come to the school committee to be voted on, and grants we handle in-house.
So, is it like the, oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it like the difference between us soliciting an organization and them offering to us? Is that the sort of the difference?
So, there's usually criteria around a grant that we're actually consciously applying for, right? So, we're taking that step. We know that it's aligned to what we're, you know, our academics, programming, or, you know, something that's supporting something that we're doing in the district. So, we're actively pursuing, like the Falmouth Education Foundation, right? So, teachers can apply for those. But the donations are usually more open, and someone, you know, it's like our angel donors that come forth and just want to help and offer.
That's really cool.
And the grants are overseeing, like internally, there are people who, at each school or whatever, you know, people are applying for a grant, they would go and tell the someone within the school around that.
Absolutely. So, there's always multiple signatures that have to take place on a grant.
Right. So, there's all this oversight.
Yes.
So, for our role, when we're thinking about the role of the school committee, is just to approve the donation aspect because that doesn't go through all of those levels. Now, is this a donation or is it a grant? Because it says there are two different words.
This is a donation.
Okay. Sorry, that's a mistake. It's a donation.
Okay. Okay. Great. Okay. So, all those in favor of accepting the donation from the Exxon company, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. The next item on the agenda is to act on a donation, $5,000 donation from anonymous donors for the Science Department. Chris?
So, again, this is a donation we've been getting, in this case, for the past six years since 2013. I looked it up the other day to make sure so I could tell you that date. It is a parent in the district who's continuing to make this donation this year. This particular, yeah, this particular donation, we can basically use for anything within the Science Department of our choice, and the needs that the teachers have identified this year include electronic balances and hot plates for the classroom and grow light plant stands for the classrooms.
Is there a motion to accept this donation?
I have a motion to accept the $5,000 anonymous donation.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on it? Any questions?
I would just like to, again, thank the anonymous donor. He's very generous.
So, donated, and the donor gives a lot of advice.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll be back here again next January with your vaccine.
Thank you, Chris.
The next item is to act on a UN field trip to New York City.
I'm here to ask your permission to take 12 wonderful students to New York City on the long weekend of the 17th through the 20th of January. It's going to be an exciting conference. I don't know whether you looked into the documentation, but it's a very creative conference. It's different from others because the school is still underway, and the entire conference takes place on the campus of Columbia University in New York City. We take subway out to the campus in the morning, and we stay there until late at night. So, it's really quite an experience. This conference, we're also going to be able to visit the permanent mission of Denmark to the United Nations. We're going to be discussing subjects with them that I am talking to the students about. I've asked them to find out, do some research, so that we maybe can get some really important information about how they treat their immigrants, what the policies are of Denmark towards immigration, what is behind this idea that Denmark is the happiest country in the world? Give us some tips. They are also going to be housed at the Marriott Marquis on Times Square. So, it's an exciting experience just by itself, just being in New York City. I think that the whole idea is opening up their eyes to a world beyond what they have here in Little Falmouth. Just being in New York City is that. I think also that the variation and the creativity of the committees that each of our 12 students is on is unique. There are historic ones, there are futuristic ones, there are some very United Nations-type simulations. We have students that are going to be representing individuals in the Turkish government in 2030, when Erdogan dies possibly, and where Turkey's going to go from now, from that point. We also have a member on the, on Lincoln's cabinet in 1861, '62. So, they're going to have to decide on what they're going to do with this secessionism that is occurring in the South. There are a couple of very, yeah, seemingly funny committees. They're going to do one committee on the office. So, one of our students is going to be a member of an office simulation where a company has to solve its problems, and they're going to be working out how the life of an American company actually is. Another one is Interplanetary Affairs. Very interesting futuristic group because they have to decide on establishing an absolutely new society for humanity on other planets, and the laws that apply here on Earth do not apply in the interplanetary system. So, the kids are going to have a really big, intense experience in New York City. Any questions about this particular?
Okay. Is there a motion to, may have a motion to accept this trip?
I move to approve the UN field trip to New York City.
Any second?
A second.
Okay. Now is their discussion. Leah?
So, I noticed that there's not a nurse signature here. Have you gotten approval from the nurse?
Yeah. This is an interesting situation that arose because the nurses' approval forms have now been expanded so that they require an MD signature that states explicitly that every single student is mentally, physically, and medically ready and able to do a field trip of this type. And that has not been the case in the past. So, we were caught by surprise at all of, I had to return all of the medical forms so that they could get that new, that element set. They're coming in, they're dribbling in, but they've had to go to their physicians, even if they're not on medication, even if there's no problem. They have to have that certification.
So, I've got to say that I don't really feel that I can approve it without the medical. I feel that that puts a lot of liability.
Could we approve it pending the, this is, they'll be, when is it?
It is the 17th. It is Thursday of next week.
Okay.
And the forms are coming in as we speak. The completed forms are coming in.
I'll definitely oversee it if you want to do it pending.
Yeah, we can approve it pending. Every kid has it in because we haven't got time not to approve it.
Right.
I will observe that as a, as the advisor of the club, that I do not see any, on the first sheet, I don't see any issues, medical issues, and I see no mental or emotional issues for these students. They're a particularly strong group. So, I'm pretty confident we'll get.
And you've been through the ropes many times, Mr. Mox. I know.
It sounds like this is a new procedure, though. MD piece.
Well, this part of it, but everything else.
This MD procedure element came in from the exchange program for overseas travel in which we wanted to retain the right to be able to say, we don't think that this student is ready for the exposure, not on a medical.
Let's go through policy.
So, that's my question. I would like to just look at the form. This is the first I'm hearing of it. Well, I think it's a great idea to be clear, not just physically, but mentally and emotionally. And I am certainly not holding this conference up at all, but I am very interested in seeing that, and it definitely hasn't rolled into policy. So, just interested.
Kelly?
So, related to that, I want to make sure that if that is standardized, that form, that our staff is made aware so that other people aren't in the same position where they've been following.
Right.
We don't want people to be caught like this with, you know, two weeks to go, and suddenly the forms are different. My other question is about the chaperones because it's overnight, and we usually have the names of the people that are going because they have to be fingerprinted, and it's short notice. So, is that all lined up?
Yeah. The query process has been completed, and as far as I have it signed. I did not submit it with the papers yet. I just got it this.
So, you have the chaperones lined up?
The chaperones lined up.
And, because they do, right, because it's overnight, they have to be fingerprinted?
Right.
That has not been done, and it has not been asked of me either in the process.
So, maybe we can get some clarification thrown in that as well.
What do you mean? I know we approved, well, I thought we did.
I thought we did last year.
For the exchange program, I know that we did. I have done that for all the parents and all the students, all the chaperones involved.
Well, the, last year, the person who went as a chaperone was a former school committee member.
Right.
So, the quarrying was, and she's, Judy's been done it for years. So, the quarrying wouldn't have been an issue.
But she still would have had it been fingerprinted, I thought. I think we just need some clarification on it.
For this particular situation, though, I mean, the quarrying wouldn't have been. But in general.
She's one of the shots.
No. She won't be.
Oh, she must be devastated.
So, any other? Leah?
So, I love this trip. I think it's wonderful. So, I don't want you to think that I'm talking against the trip. I'm not. I'm just talking about some protocol. So, another piece that we got into place last year, which would alleviate some of this piece, is getting this information a lot sooner. So, and I think what we talked about was at least 30 days prior. Right now, this is looking to start on January 17th. So, all of these things that we need in place, it makes me really nervous to approve something. And we're going to do it pending, but it's a lot of pressure on you and a lot of pressure on everyone. So, making sure that next year, if we could get some more notice, at least 30 days before, that would be great.
Yeah. We did begin very early. We had some proposals to appear at earlier committee meetings back in December, but then we had the vacations, and we had other things.
I know it comes at a tough time of year.
Yeah. But we started very early in the process, and then this medical thing.
So, to sum up, we will have a fully vetted, or whatever the word is, chaperone on file.
Yep.
And we will have all these medically approved forms on file.
Do you want me to supply the committee?
Lori.
An example of the form?
Well, that won't be necessary right now.
He will provide me all the information.
Yeah. Lori will be the overseer.
Check that it's all followed up.
Okay.
So, just leave everything out.
So, I think is it technically, like, we've amended the motion, then, that it's approval?
It's pending.
Pending. Pending these things. Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're voting on.
Pending the medical, the full medical file for every student.
And approving.
And the fingerprinting.
And fingerprinted as well.
Yes.
Okay.
If that's the requirement.
Yeah. I was not, I was not requesting that.
Okay.
Okay.
One last time, because there are a lot of issues here. We will have the query signed, and we will have the form signed for each student, which Lori will ascertain. Okay?
Just to clarify, the query is signed, but there's no fingerprinting requested or supplied yet.
I think it should go by whatever the policy is.
Whatever the policy is. I want to recheck the policies.
We have it in our policy manual.
Okay.
And luckily, born as close, you can get fingerprinted quickly there.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything since that was, okay. All right. All those in favor of approving this with the two pending addendas that we put on there? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mox.
Thank you. Have a great time.
Next item is to act on the FHS field.
Yes. So, before I begin, I once again want to thank my advisory committee. We had some independent community members that stepped up to follow through on this process, and they have been extremely helpful. So, Bob Antonucci, Jennifer Edwards, Mike Duffany, and Sam Patterson have been involved in the process all along. Bill Ryder, as a school committee member, has been at every single meeting and discussion and phone conversation, so I appreciate that. And certainly, Mary Gans and Patrick, Patrick's been our liaison, so has done a lot of work. I just want to recognize all the people that's helped to get us to what I'm hoping is going to be a successful night tonight. So, we've had the bid opening. Just as a reminder to everyone, we did the restroom concession stand as a separate bid, and that was in December. You voted for the company that was brought forth in December. And so, this was the bid opening that we had on January 3rd. This is for the rest of the field project, so all the other components were part of this, including the press box. So, in December, I had mentioned that there were no bids on the press box. The concern had been that the press box would be separate from the stadium stands, and the companies felt that those two, and no one was willing to do that. So, we, I believe I told you, in December, we were consulting legal, and it came back that because of the quote for keeping the press box in, it came back under $150,000, we did approve to put that back into the field project. So, we were able to bid everything else. We had four bids come in, and we thoroughly went through all of them. The bid range was from, we have $2,242,800. We had, and the high range was $2,303,806, some change. You can see how close the bid is, within $60,000 was the, how close the bid range was. We had, the alternate was the basketball court renovations, and the range was at the $27,023.54 up to $32,000. So, again, it was a very close range on that. Green Acres was the company that had the low bid, and all the references were checked and were successful. And so, at this time, we are recommending that the school committee accepts Green Acres as our contractor for our field project.
Okay. I'd like, is there a motion to accept this bid?
I'll make a motion to accept Green Acres.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion, questions, Leah?
What is the alternate one?
The basketball court renovation. Because of the location of the restrooms and concession, we needed to move the basketball courts. And so, resurfacing new, Kathleen could actually, I think, speak to this better. Am I doing okay, Kathleen? She's been intimately involved in all this. But I think new backboards, nets.
Maybe reduce the basketball courts from one full, they're still hoping to keep two full courts there. But they will rearrange that, resurface it, put the correct kinds of backboards there to make enough room for the restroom concessions, the prefab building that's going to drop in there.
Was this a new addition?
No. That's always been in there. We always knew it was going to be in there. The reason for the alternate was we didn't know how the bids were coming in, if we would, if there would be enough funds. So, we may pulled that out and said that that could always be done later, but we were hoping, and because this has come in within our range of appropriated funds, we can accept that. So, if you're going to, I'd like that to be a part of the bid. We'd like to do everything because it'll be within our range.
Should we say that in the motion, or?
Should probably, yes, say that it should be, that you're accepting the bid, the base bid and the alternate.
Okay. So, I motioned that. So, motion that I'm, I'm making a motion to accept the base bid and alternate one bid.
From Green Acres.
From Green Acres.
I can second that again.
Okay. Kel?
I just, I really appreciate the materials that we're getting from CDM Smith and how it just, it goes through all of the process for us so that we don't end up spending, you know, forever talking about things that they've already, you know, questioning things that they've already taken into consideration and given us all the background, everything that we could need to know. So, I'm just very, I'm happy with this. It's great.
Last time we mentioned them, I asked Sharon, their letter is, the public can see their letter somewhere, Sharon, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Even better.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other comments or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of accepting this bid, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. There you go.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay. Next item is, Mr. Olenek is here to talk about the Lawrence School Tennis Court project.
Good evening. I know most of you. My name is Joel Line, recreation director. And my life, too, will change with the football field being moved from my place to your place. So, it's going to be a lot quieter around there for me in the afternoons and stuff and the weekends, but that's a, it's a great thing. I think it's going to be great for the town to have that field up there, and those kids playing on a great field. And the reason I'm here is to let you know that I have received a CPC grant to refurbish the tennis courts at the Long School. We will be making two brand-new tennis courts there with four pickleball courts on those courts. Also, a standalone pickleball court will be there, as well as redoing the basketball court. So, you're going to get a whole new facility right there. We're going to, it's going to do a really nice job. It's going to be great for the rectory department, for senior citizens, for the school. And what I would like to ask you guys is how you would like me to approach scheduling of that court during school hours. It is quite a ways away from the school, but again, I realize the limitations that we can have with adults near the school and the school grounds. So, I'd like recommendations from you guys as how we could schedule it. I've spoken to Tom a little bit, and we're in contact with each other as far as if the school needs it for our tennis program, if they want to do pickleball lessons, what classes through the gym. We're more than willing to, you know, put signs up and take care of letting the school have as much use of that, those courts as they need. And it's going to be an awesome thing for the town, because, you know, pickleball has taken over greatly. It's, we have two sets of courts outside, and the courts are overloaded. This will help those courts, you know, relax a little bit there inside my building five days a week. It's going to be great, and it'll give tennis people some more courts to play on as well. And we're going to specify specific times for tennis and pickleball. And I'd love to hear any questions that you have, and I'm really looking forward to hopefully Tom meeting approving this in April, and we can get started, and hopefully have it done by beginning to midsummer.
So, I'm not sure that we would move to accept this right now because of the, and Mr. Bushy, I'm sure, will have to make some recommendations about the times that Mr. Olenek is.
Right.
So, it says act. I suppose that could mean we stand behind it or approve it.
You can recommend what you think would be best if there's, if you prefer no people playing on the courts during school hours. That is totally fine. I would have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're all working together and coordinating our scheduling of those courts.
Melissa?
So, I have lots of questions surrounding this, and I don't know how you want to proceed with this agenda item before I start asking questions.
That's why I'm saying, do we want to just support it and then approve it once all these things have been ironed out? Because I don't know that you can efficiently and effectively iron out specifics in public.
Right.
We have to discuss it in public, though. But it's not our decision. It's a decision between Tom and Lori and Jeff.
Yeah. So, yes, Leah?
So, my suggestion around this would be that this really isn't a school committee issue, so if Lori and Mr. Bushy and Tom Bushy, if you guys talk, and then come back to us when you need us to. when you need us to act on anything.
So I'm not sure that the, I think the selectmen would want to know that you're approving that they're, that you're.
We're supporting it.
That you would make some kind of motion of support before they vote on it. They're going to want to know, because it's on the school property.
Right.
I think. So I think that was the purpose of making sure, you know, taking these steps. But the details, I mean, if you approve this, the selectmen approve this, then I, you know, we can certainly work out the details of what that, that means about who's going to be using them and the time schedule and such and so forth. Yeah, what that looks like. Those specifics can be worked out.
Yeah. Cal?
So, can I make a motion? Can I make a motion to approve the project?
I think we should move to support it. Yeah, is that what you're?
Because I think, yeah, because we, in order for, because it's a change to the school grounds, we have to vote to accept that change.
But a change isn't ready yet. We support them working on making the change.
I wouldn't feel comfortable yet supporting this without knowing that it's been talked about and worked through at the school level first.
Okay, so I'm giving my recommendation that we move forward. If Tom wants, Bushy wants to speak to this, I mean, we can welcome Tom to come up at the time.
I mean, I think we all want it. We just have to make sure we do it right.
Can I just ask some questions?
Before we do that? Please come up and have a seat, and then I believe we have a couple students here today.
Okay. Mr. Bushy?
Just before that, could, should we have a clarification of the timeline? What things that we're just mentioning need to happen? When, you were saying the selectmen and CPC and blah, blah, blah. Do we just know the timelines?
First thing that'll need to happen will have to be approved by town meeting to approve the CPC's officially given me the money to do the project. It will have to go out to bid, so I'm assuming that the bids won't even be open probably until school year is probably out. We could certainly delay whatever start for work during the summertime, you know, make sure our kids aren't in school.
Okay, so but prior to that, I guess we're saying that before the selectmen are voting for the warrant, they want to hear from us, right? So those are the dates we're working with? Okay.
Yes, Sam?
And Sam could speak to that?
Since we have them here, we should ask.
I don't have a lot to say, other than that the school is totally in support of this. We, we can use the tennis courts for a variety of reasons, not just phys ed and extracurricular activities. We've got engineering teachers that are eager to have a smooth surface for solar car races and other activities and academic items. So Joe has been very, very great about reaching out to me about how we could use it, what, you know, what times the community should be able to use it and what times the school should be able to use it. And I have total faith in Mr. Olenek and the rec department that we would get signage and have some kind of established rules for who can use the facility and when. And I think it's, I kind of liken it to the Mullen Hall playground, for example, about a space that the community uses throughout the day and week, but there's an understanding and rules about, you know, when the school's on it, it's time for the school to, to use it.
Absolutely. And that's what we're looking, the DBWs already said that they would make signs anytime we needed to, to put stuff up and dedicate whatever specific hours, you know, we come up with.
Sam?
I think what's really being asked is your endorsement of this project for the sake of town meeting. If we will review it and we will basically say, yes, this is something we agree with, but really it's to tell town meeting members that you're willing to accept the work on properly. Now, let me just say, having been in your shoes before, that the use of that facility is your authority. So you can say when it's used and when it's not. So I don't think there's any reason why you should be worried about it, because you can change it anytime in the future as to when it might be available for public use versus school use. So that's totally your authority. It's not, you're not casting that in concrete right now. You're just basically saying, we endorse upgrading the tennis courts and expanding it to include a pickleball facility, and it is a town asset, and like the playground that was mentioned, or ball fields, it is used by adults for various sports and everything, but when it's used and how it's used, under what conditions, is your authority.
So I, I guess, I saw some students walking in at this time, so I assume they want to say something about this?
Yep, I'll step back, it's possible future liaisons of the school.
Hi, my name is Lily Ferranti, and I'm a seventh grade student at the Lawrence School and a part of the warrant committee. Recently, at our first meeting, we discussed the renovation of these tennis courts, as they currently are unable to use and are in really great need of repair. These, redoing these tennis courts would prove to be a great asset to our community and to our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And we have a young gentleman here.
Hi, my name is Christopher Rosa from the eighth grade warrant committee, and a lot of teachers would like the smooth surface of the tennis court, and I would think it'd be a great asset to have.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathleen, did you want to say anything?
Just a little more background on it. This was really initiated by a teacher at Lawrence School, Jesse Gottlieb, who is a tennis fanatic. His, his goal is to start a tennis program at the middle school level, which most of the other schools on the Cape have. He's already started free clinics, will work towards an intramural program, and then a feeder program for the high school. So Jesse deserves a lot of credit on the tennis end. And then the gentleman from Cape Town Island's Tennis and Track, when he came up with the design, could fit the two pickleball courts inside the two tennis courts, a dedicated basketball court, and one pickleball court separate from, so you can always get on that. So it really, the idea really started three or four years ago with Jesse, and I want to give him credit. He is just ready to go. He's already done fundraises for the tennis program. We don't have any tennis courts. He's done fundraises. He's ready to go, and it would certainly benefit the high school program. When the rec piece came in, previously, the rec director Helen Kennedy did a proposal to renovate the tennis courts up on, in West Falmouth, up Brick Hill Road. And this new material, this concrete material, is supposed to last 30 years, so not crack, and the pickleball courts are wonderful there.
Guaranteed for 30 years.
Right. So I think as far as use and so forth, it would be similar even to the tennis courts at the high school. This signs up and it's posted. One thing, I don't want to throw a wrench in this at all, but one thing you need to just clarify is Mary Gans noticed when she was principal at Lawrence School, that piece of land is not actually school property, it's town property. So that should probably be clarified. Everybody is making an assumption it is a school facility, it's, the school's going to use it, and the town supports that, but technically, you know, I don't know exactly where the lines would run, or how that piece of land would ever not have been part of the school property. But, and maybe it's on it, and Mr. Patterson might be able to do some research. But in any case, we're, I just wanted to mention that was, you know, official. But we are very excited about expanding the tennis program. I know there's pickleball people waiting in line, and it is, it's in disrepair right now. It's sad to have that facility at the school, on school property, wherever it is.
You can see by some of the pictures you have there, the condition of the courts, yes.
And we'd love to have, the work was done over the summer. I'm thinking that some Piki classes and intramural will certainly start in the fall, and with the goal of, let's see, 2020, maybe a middle's level interdisciplinary tennis program, another offering there that I think would be met with a lot of enthusiasm locally. Either of these students are tennis, are tennis people, but it's a great opportunity to get them involved.
It's a very centrally located facility that would be great for people walking around inside town and without having that vehicle.
Okay. So I guess the verb that we're looking for is to endorse. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. That was your verb. So would somebody like to make a motion to endorse this?
I'll make a motion to endorse the Lawrence School Tennis Court project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, any more discussion? Leah?
So I, I'm just wondering now, hearing this information about the land not being part of, just making sure that that's all legally addressed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that could be a major issue, so I just.
It's town-owned land. There's no question about that.
Yeah. It's whether it's. Who had, who does, who can make that?
I love that camera. Absolutely.
It should be right online. Yeah, I was looking at it right now, but the page didn't load fast enough for me.
Well, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, to just be sure about that, so.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
I have a few questions. Do the, so again, a lot of these questions I had were sort of answered previously. Do the students have a pickleball program in the current curriculum for PE at Lawrence?
I don't know if they, if they have a, if that's filtered in there. I know that Joe and Julie have both talked about that as, you know, possible, I don't, they have, they don't have the, they do have the lower nets, actually, now that I think of it, so they might be.
In the gym.
Doing that indoors.
They might do it indoors.
Not outdoors, though.
Okay.
And they're probably the same ones that they use inside that they use outside. It's relatively $200, $250 for one set.
Sure.
And then I had another question with the rec, and this is directed to you, Joe. With the rec renovation and the former Fuller Field, how many pickleball courts will be included in the new renovation of that space?
Of the tennis courts?
Outside. Are we going to have them outside, or is it just going to?
Not at the rec.
Continue to be, okay, so will continue to be inside?
Yes, they'll, we have the six courts inside.
Right.
That'll use the five days a week.
Okay.
But there'll be nothing outside.
Okay. That's, thank you.
No worries.
Yes.
Is there fence? Is the fence being replaced?
The fence will be replaced. The fence right now is a 15-foot fence.
Yeah.
It's going to be brought down to 12 or 10.
Good, so it looks sort of like a.
It's just way too.
Yeah.
And there still will be the same amount of gates going in. There'll be a 4-foot fence between the basketball court and the dedicated pickleball court with a gate wide enough for wheelchairs to fit through. And we'll do a wheelchair, accessible stoned us from the parking lot to the gate entering to the tennis court side. And if you see in your pictures, there's a picture of the fence. DBW's going to cut the fence.
Great.
Move the fence a little bit, still protect the telephone pole that's there, and then they'll do a curb cut right there, and there'll be one handicap parking spot right in front there.
So related to that, if you could also consider having a handicap parking spot in that location, too?
Yeah, there's going to be handicap.
Because there aren't any right now.
No, they're going to, they're going to put one in as far as the curb cut and handicap access, there'll be a parking spot there as well.
And then there, I think there still is, I think it's a piece of plywood up against the wall that people have hit the ball against.
Right now, that is not in the.
It's not in the plan.
Yes. I think if we have extra money, we would be able to put something up, and we would not put plywood up again.
People use it. I've used it, even though it's just a piece of plywood.
The day I was there, there was a guy rolling it over that thing, and the gaps in the pavement are like this much. I couldn't believe he was rolling it over that.
He's there all the time.
All the time, yeah.
Okay. It's great, I'm so excited.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of endorsing this proposal? Do you say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, abstaining?
And I would be more than happy to be with Lori and Tom anytime, if we want to get together.
Thanks, Joe.
And I want to thank.
Appreciate it.
And I want to thank you two students for coming. I'm sure, cut into your homework time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will begin our MCAS and accountability presentation.
And then at the same time. Sorry, looks like we're rearranging everyone. Mr. Teller and I are excited about presenting our accountability, achievement, and growth So we'll start with the accountability, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Teller to talk specifically about the achievement and growth aspects. So the rationale tonight about the accountability, it is a brand, it is a new system for Massachusetts, so we're all learning. The previous accountability system has been in place since 2012, and so this is new, and there are quite a few changes to how Desi is now looking at district and school accountability. So here you will see that we have the indicators of achievement, student growth, high school completion, English language proficiency, and we have additional indicators of the chronic absenteeism. So one point that, with the chronic absenteeism, that I will mention, before it was reported, but now it is a part of the larger accountability system, so there is more emphasis on that at this time. You can see the separation of the non-high schools and the high schools and districts. So there is, you know, some slight differences there. The weighting of the achievement versus the student growth is three to one. Here you can see that we have, with the same measures, we have the non-high schools and the high schools with the, with the English language learners and with no English language learners. So if the cells are not populated, because we don't have enough students in, that will create the cell, then the percentage, the 10%, then gets factored, for the English language proficiency, gets factored into the achievement and growth. So for Falmouth, the, all of our schools do not have enough students to populate, so you will see the yellow brackets, and so the schools would be, whether it's the non-high schools or high schools, would be calculated at the 67% achievement and 23% student growth. However, and then with the high schools, it's the 48% and the 22%, and that's the weighted indicators. For the district, we do populate it for enough students, so we will be, you'll see that our percentages will be for achievement at the 60 and 20, and the 40 and 20. So a key factor here, this accountability system is focused on the lowest performing cohort. So the weight for all students is 50%, and then the 50% for the lowest performing cohort. And the lowest performing cohort is the lowest 25% of our students in each individual school and when the district is calculated as the district. So you can see that they are placing a high emphasis on this lowest performing cohort. The belief system being that every school, every district has a lowest performing, no matter what that performance is, it's still a lowest 25%, and the focus is bringing that 25% up. So for the lowest 25, or the lowest 25%, the students must be reported in Sims for two consecutive years. They have to be identified using a combined ELA and math average MCAS scale score for the previous year, and Desi shares each school and district list with us. The grade three to eight student performance is compared year to year, and the high school student performance is compared cohort to cohort. So as you can see, the targets we have are set for both the all students and the lowest performing here. So as you see the number of indicators, there will be targets set for those that are check marked. So you can see for the lowest 25, they are focused on the achievement and growth and the absenteeism, where in all students you have those additional categories. So the points are awarded on progress toward the targets for each indicator, for both the all students and for the lowest performing. So if we have declined, we can. So if we have declined, we get zero points. If we have no change from the previous year, we get one point. If we've improved, we get two. If we've met the target, we get three points. And if we've exceeded the target, we get four points. So the percentage of target points is calculated using the points earned out of the points possible for each indicator with weighing for each category of indicators. So how did we fare? We, the Falmouth High School, as our only high school, has added accountability indicators focused on graduation and dropout rates on both. Falmouth High School has exceeded the targets. Both Mullen Hall and North Falmouth Elementary Schools exceeded the targets for chronic absenteeism for both all students and for the lowest performing cohort. Mullen Hall, North Falmouth, and T-Ticket Schools exceeded the targets for our ELA achievement in both the economically disadvantaged and the high needs subgroups. And T-Ticket Elementary School exceeded the achievement targets. And Lawrence School met the targets for both ELA and math achievement for students with disabilities. So some highlights that I think that we should be very proud of. So the categorization, which I'll share in a minute just to give some background here. We have first to the far, to your far right, we have schools that will be requiring assistance. We have then to the left, which will be, account for about 85% of the schools, schools that are either partially meeting targets or schools that are meeting targets. And then there will be schools of recognition that will come out of the schools meeting targets. As you can see, there's 31% of the schools across the Commonwealth that are meeting the targets. 53% of the schools across the Commonwealth are partially meeting targets. This is the largest category of, in this first year of accountability. So again, how did Falmouth fare? So we now have, the district is considered its own. It's not a culmination of all of our schools. We stand alone as a district calculation. We are partially meeting targets as well as Falmouth High School, Lawrence, Morse Pond, East Falmouth, and Mullen Hall are all partially meeting our targets. Both North Falmouth and T-Ticket are meeting targets. So if we go back for a second, you can see that most of the district are hitting in that, the majority of the other schools in the Commonwealth at the 53%, but we do have two schools that are in that higher level, the 31%. So here's how, so this, you can certainly, this is public information. You can certainly go into DUCY and you can see this. We are providing the district. You can see that all the targets indicators that we, not the targets, the indicators that we have discussed. This is the district level. So you can see that the number of points that we have earned for each. You have the all students category. Then you have the lowest performing category for the non-high schools. So that would be all of our schools except Falmouth High. And then we have the all students at the high school and the lowest performing at the high school. Again, each one of those two categories are 50% each in the weight. And then, then you can see the points awarded. Next slide, you can see that our overall is 61% is our, as a district, is our rating at partially meeting targets. So in summary, DUCY has clearly communicated that every school and every district has a lowest performing cohort, as I'd stated earlier. To date, we have limited information, although some of that has changed since this presentation has been published. We do now have, after we have now received the lowest performing cohort from the state. So we do need to, that actually just came in Friday afternoon, very late. So we have not had a chance to take a look at that yet or with the schools. So we'll be kind of digging into that information. But we have not received our performance targets yet. So we do not know at the school level or at the district level what our performance targets will be for this year. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Teller now.
So understanding how we got our way to our accountability categorization, we have to take a step back and look at both the achievement and the growth because those two factors for ELA, math in particular, are amplified in accountability rating. So for next generation MCAS, these are the major points that the Department of Education stressed to us in making the transition and why we needed to move to a more rigorous test design. And so they are assuring us that if we are following the standards, that this test is giving us an accurate picture of how students are in ELA at about 75% of the way through the standards for their grade level curriculum. And for math, they're at approximately the 90% mark in the year. Also tends to explicit assessment of critical thinking and problem-solving skills. So just really quickly, the parts that are underlined there, it's really testing real-life applications through the system and the way that it's put together and the questions are designed. Close connections shared among core communication skills. In particular, it really tested the reading and the writing. When we transitioned and we have some of the multiple texts, they have not enabled all the video that we're hoping for for speaking and listening, but they are amplifying the reading and writing in multiple passages. And the transfer of knowledge and skills across different contexts. And that's really starting to come up, especially with the passing of the science standards, to look at the interaction across those domains and how we are reading, writing, communicating, and solving problems. That said, just to make sure that also we have that common language of how scores are reported, this shifted us from that conversation about proficient and advanced students at the higher levels and has us at meeting and exceeding expectations, very similar to that partially meeting on the targets and meeting the targets. So really, the dividing line here in the new numbering system is 500. Students are meeting or exceeding expectations if their scores in any one particular subtest are above the 500 mark. And the reason why it's important to call this out is because this was the last spring that Grade 10 tested on what's called the Legacy MCAS. So you're going to hear me mix language a little bit in this about advanced and proficient and meeting and exceeding expectations because Grade 10 still, up until this coming March, was testing on the former assessment. So English Language Arts, the darker blue lines in the bar chart are Falmouth's performance. The lighter blue lines are the state aggregate performance. And I think what's important as you, as you follow this, is really follow that separation between the dark and the light blue lines. It carries across all the bar graphs. But I think this picture of English Language Arts across grades three through eight really begins to tell the story when we look at the performance of Falmouth against the Commonwealth. We have exceeded in the aggregate the number of students who are meeting and exceeding expectations. And then again, in the subgroup. So this is a depiction, again, of grades three through eight combined because if I tease out each individual grade level, we'll be spending lots of quality time here this evening. So one of the pieces here is that you see that the all students is slightly behind. But then when you look at where are our most vulnerable students, they're exceeding the state. And I think what really stands out is that separation both at economically disadvantaged and high needs. And again, high needs includes students with disabilities and/or economically disadvantaged and/or else. They have to be in two of the three categories. And that says that that statistically is a more significantly at-risk group of students.
Yeah, Kel.
So can you just say again how it is that all students? Because if we look at this top bar, our students are performing better than the state. But then when we go down to the all students in the subgroups, they're not, but each of these other subgroups is. So I don't get how that works. How's the math on that work? Like, who is in this all students group that is causing?
So when you look at the all students group, right, and then you see we tease out students who are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, high-needs students, then students who are not identified as having a disability, students who are not economically disadvantaged or represented on either side of that scale.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't get it.
No, no, that's no problem. Because we don't report them as non-identified as a subgroup. I get it.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Similar story when we isolate out the Grade 10, again, separating it because it's not meeting and exceeding, but it's the former language of proficient and advanced. This one, the story is similar for all students. They are high-performing. So we look at 97% of the students on their first attempt at their competency determination are earning a proficient or advanced score in English Language Arts. So it's a very strong story for our English Language Arts curriculum across the district as students progress and ensuring that they are ready to earn their competency determination. This is a growth summary and because growth is reported in a similar fashion, I have all grades on this one bar chart. But you can see that the state sets the benchmark at 50, which is why the light blue line on the growth models are all set at 50. And then you can see where we are in comparison. So our students are emerging, they're gaining strength in fourth grade, they're a little bit off from the state. They start to creep above in five, six, seven. We're going to come back to that a little bit more when we talk about mathematics and where they stand against the state. Dead even at eight and then slightly ahead again at 10. And this is all part of that restructuring. So as Laurie said, the accountability system's new. And then they reset that sort of bell curve piece for how they were dividing students on either side of the 500 line last year. And we're just trying to make our way forward as we understand that system. So here's a chart that I think does a really good job of telling the growth story. So if you take and look at students across our district, all grade levels who tested in ELA, what you see is that our students are all at moderate or high growth. And in particular, if you look at the numbers in moderate, moderate goes on a scale of 40 to 59. And there's quite a bunch of those numbers shaded in yellow as the students progress across grade levels and they have more and more time with us, they're exposed to more skills and standards. They're getting into the higher 50s. So I really like the quick visual that this chart shares. And then the final slide, I'm looking at achievement versus growth. So if you take this in quartiles and you look in the top right of this chart, that's the quadrant for high growth, high achievement. And our students are concentrated around the midpoint but making their way up into that quadrant. So the standards have been revised a couple of times. The assessment is changing and our students are faring very well and they're moving into that quadrant. And that's just looking at our students isolated to Falmouth and not pulling back and looking at the state because again, that growth target across the state is set at 50. So all those dots kind of start to clump around the middle. So I just wanted to separate that out. But grade for grade, you can see some variance. Seventh grade's a little higher, eighth and the fourth grade are a little bit more to the left of that. But they're all on the high-growth side and moving their way above the high achievement line. So then we look at the story and how each of these compares for mathematics. Again, when we look at grades three through eight on the next-gen MCAS and the division meeting and exceeding against the state, you can see there's significant performance, especially as students progress. And I told you we'd come back and revisit that grade seven jump, current eighth-grade students. So you can see, now that's particularly important because when the state told us which grade levels in which subjects actually perform the poorest in the Commonwealth, they isolated grade seven. So we expected to see a different story when we pulled our data. We're quite, quite excited to see that we had the exact opposite. It's our most significant error for achievement and growth.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? I'm just, I'm trying to get clarification around, is this comparing these students to where they were the year before?
No.
Okay, so it's comparing them to? So, and when we're looking at achievement, it's comparing them to?
Their same age peers in the Commonwealth. The growth is multiple years.
So the growth is from last year?
It's a minimum of two years. They have to have at least two years of test taking in order to get their growth score. So it's their change over time compared to other students their age across the state.
Okay, so if we wanted to look for this trend with the seventh grade, we would look at sixth grade last year and see if they had that same trend?
Yes, and they were not, they, they had strong signs of growth, but they did not have that level of discrepancy between their performance in the Commonwealth. Is that what you're asking? Yeah, this is a much higher rate.
Right, so I was trying to get a sense if this is something that's been going with this cohort of, this is our bubble year?
It's the bubble year.
Right?
This is our largest, not at that significant gap.
But they're also crushing it in English, too.
Yes.
So what the heck is going on?
So I had a, can I ask a question surrounding the bubble class? Were there grants offered in their younger years to give them like math? I know that grants come along that will, you know, we get like math grants or English grant, like things that could help, have helped them. I know that I'm asking from like, you know, three, four years ago, two or three years ago when they were in elementary school. But like, is it just because it's the bubble? Is it the number? Is it, do they have something that like isn't available today? What is it?
You can take each graduating class of students and sort of see that there's a slightly different composition in the students. So there could be something unique to the cohort. There was not any one particular, like, we did this major initiative at this grade level. But I think that progressively, we've had really explicit conversations about instruction. You know, I know that there was a lot of work around the What's Math Good to Do It, if you can remember the title, and some of the summer PD work that we've done. But we've also really worked hard to have a common language of instruction, which is reinforcing, you know. So if we're having that conversation, we can tap across grade levels and really focus in on the transitions as well and make sure that we're articulating that over time. I think all of those things cumulatively are having an impact. But I stopped and looked at, there's no one phenomenon that it was just easily attributable to because that would be awesome, right? We could take that to scale.
Right. We just need to put Mr. Bushy in all of those lists? No.
It's a hard-working group of kids. Teachers have been working hard on it.
And department heads have studied that, too, because, you know, they're trying to figure out what that means for resources and, yeah, instruction.
Kel, I mean, you know what your name is.
Leah. Sorry, I never knew what your names are. I actually, I need to just make sure that you can see that. There you go. Let's say, oh, so this, this class, I mean, I think, this class has been so on our radar because we have had to add extra teachers in the elementaries. We had to do a multi-grade group at Mullen Hall because of this cohort of students. So I think it's really interesting to watch their achievement also with this because it's been a group that we've always, we've had to think outside the box with of saying, how do we give all of these students what they need? And it makes me really proud to see that we've been doing, we've been doing a good job because this was, this was definitely a challenge of having to, you know, pull resources. We needed to hire more people when we had no funds, right, for this group. And we made it work and now we're reaping the benefits, which is awesome.
I think we need to put a lot of credit on the kids, too, though, you know. Not, I don't think we did anything monumentally different for them. That's my opinion on it.
Well, I think when I'm saying we, I'm saying co, you know, everybody who's been involved in this process, so, yeah.
But certain groups of kids are just stronger. That's a fact of life, you know.
But more, I think more so than any other grade in recent memory, we have had to do different things for this group. We've hired aides and we've hired added sections.
That's because of their number, maybe.
Right, right, right. But it, so they're all on our radar to make sure.
It's just an interesting phenomenon here.
Yeah. I mean, that's a giant difference.
That's what I mean.
Between them and the rest of the state.
And the interesting thing is sort of if we project out what it might be this year, you know, we may not see that, that same difference in growth. Especially because they're going to be taking the eighth grade test and some of them, well, great number of them are taking algebra. And the test doesn't test their, you know, algebra specifically. So that also separates out the data moving forward. But they are, you know, statistics well worth studying to figure out, but there's no instant improvement on that as yet. So when we look at grades three through eight, a little bit different than what we saw for ELA in as much as at every level, including all students, outperforming the state. And then here again is the growth summary. So you can see this significant disparity in growth for this particular cohort, higher in mathematics than it was in ELA. And again, you can see that state bar is set at 50. And so here's that same depiction. So here you see that at Grade 10, the growth rate is lower than the state. And you can see, again, so you should expect to see those coded as red when you see that gap difference. But one of the things that we stepped back and look at was the rate of growth over time. And those students are still earning proficient and advanced scores in terms of achievement on their math test. But there's also a disparity in terms of which math course they're taking. they're taking because of the range of math courses when they get to the high school. So we're also, that's another, if you're wondering, sort of why is that column red? That's another phenomenon that we're trying to isolate and study a little bit more closely. But again, the great majority of our students are progressing in yellow and blue. So here's that same memory for ELA, they were all clustered edging towards that upper right quadrant. Here you can see this spread, and again, seventh grade, they were higher in ELA than their other grade level cohorts, significantly higher here. So the story for science is a little different, simply because it's only tested at three grade levels, and there is no measurement of growth for the science test. So just isolating out the three grade levels at which it is assessed, grades five, grade eight, and nine. You can see that at each of these, there is a significant difference, not only for us, but also for the state where at grade eight, and that's been the one where configurations of middle schools, junior high schools, eighth grades in high schools is also part of what's being studied. But we have put additional, I think Chris left after the previous presentation, we've also put additional instructional resources specifically at grades seven and eight to make some adjustments responsibly to what this data is telling us, and isolating the standards and looking at which ones in particular. So here's that look across the subgroups for the three grades, combining all students across them, they're all taking the same test, these are all assessed on the advanced and proficient rating. And just realize that. So it's a much shorter story, because they don't have that story of growth behind them. And I think the other part, looking at the way that the trend line has been for grade eight scores, will be to look, you know, this time next year, or slightly earlier, how these eighth grade students, based on the ELA and math predictions we've had over time, how they fare on this grade eight science test. So here's our overall success stories for ELA. Falmouth High School continued high performance, 97% of students earning their competency determination of the highest scores, first test, first test-taking preference. Despite the regression in achievement at grade seven across the Commonwealth, as we shared with you, Lawrence School's grade seven cohort demonstrated the greatest success. The number of students exceeding expectations just about tripled in ELA.
So that's comparing it to seventh grade the following year? Or is that comparing it to that same grade the year before?
That is comparing it to that same grade, just looking at that statistic, so...
Just looking at seventh grade from 2017?
From spring 2017 and spring 2018. Yep, so that's a cohort comparison, yep, two different groups of students. And then decreased the number of students not meeting expectations by 50%. After their eighth grade testing year, all of their accountability measures will be cohort to cohort, so this is a good predictor of future accountability ratings. Morse Pond students outpaced their peers across the Commonwealth with an average ELA score, scaled score, 11 points higher than their peers in other districts. And all four of our elementary schools demonstrated decreased numbers of students not meeting expectations for grade three ELA, which means that they should be celebrated for increasing the number of students meeting and exceeding. For math, Falmouth High School's continued its high performance, 87% of first-time test takers earning their competency determination. That's a 9% higher average than the Commonwealth, and they've sustained a higher average than the Commonwealth. Despite the regression in achievement at grade seven in the Commonwealth, again, Lawrence School's students demonstrated significant success. You can see the disparity, the number of students moving into exceeding expectations more than doubled. In Morse Pond, grade six students demonstrated significant growth as well as strong achievement with an average scale score above 500. 56% of their students achieved above 500, again, 9% higher than the state average. Here's some more information about elementary and how they fare. North Falmouth and T-Ticket, as Lori shared earlier, earned the top classification of meeting targets. In addition, North Falmouth, 2/3 of the students in both grades three and four earned meeting or exceeding in both ELA and math. T-Ticket, students in the lowest performing cohort also outperformed students in the aggregate by 11%, so the phenomenon we talked about earlier in the English Language Arts scores. And at East Falmouth Elementary School, students in the lowest performing cohort outpaced their peers by 50%, a difference of 12% for the aggregate and 25% for the lowest performing cohort on their accountability measures. And at Mullen Hall, students earned exceeding expectations in ELA increased more than doubling for their fourth grade cohort. And so finally, the best way to predict your future is to create it, as Abraham Lincoln was once quoted as having said, and I think it's a great connection back to Mr. Mock's presentation earlier about one of the committees. But Falmouth Public Schools has just as much to celebrate in teaching and learning as it has clear areas in which to concentrate its attention and grow, and so thereby, together, we're creating our future. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Can you, I just need a definition. On the calculation thing, it says extended engagement rate for high school. What does that mean?
So extended engagement rate means students who come back for a fifth year or an additional semester study after what would have been their senior year. So we, yeah, so that's a place where we didn't gain points because we gained or we exceeded the target for students in a...
Drawback category, okay.
Yeah, so if they didn't come back but chose to earn the high set, we scored, we fared well for their pursuance of the high set, but because they didn't actually come back to earn their diploma, that affects the points in the other category.
Going back to the growth summary chart that you had for mathematics, you had mentioned something about the grade 10 that has, you know, is in the red, because they're doing a range of math courses. But would that, wouldn't that be comparable across the state as well? That wouldn't be specific?
Yes, so there are also opportunities within the standards to pick different sequences of courses, and that's something that we're evaluating. So in some of the high schools across the Commonwealth, all ninth graders take geometry, and in some, all ninth graders take Algebra I. We have a great number of students who are taking Algebra I, so determining whether or not in eighth grade. So we had to determine, do we take their Algebra I, geometry, and then Algebra II? Or Algebra I, you know, geometry, Algebra I, Algebra II for the students coming up? So we've been evaluating that and looking, because we've actually had both sequences. So that's something that we are studying in terms of that growth, is just the course sequencing and its impact on student performance.
So that actually leads me into my second question, is just sort of what your take is on these changes and what the, this testing is providing us with real information about our students? Because we know tests are one indicator, and it's, you know, on a particular day of where that student may be. Does, the information that you presented today, is that giving you clearer determinations about what we should be doing at the district level, such as maybe doing this change in sequencing?
Sure, so obviously, even though it's embargoed, we get the data much earlier. So we take that data and we use that as a baseline to isolate standards for specific grade level cohorts, to say this is the area in which they need the greatest support to move through this year. And then from that, we say, okay, here are the standards, here's the skills and content needed to be better at these standards, and then that's how we divide our common assessment intervals over the course of the year. So we use, we use the data we get in the fall responsibly to help personalize the instruction for that particular cohort. Does that...
So then, so you're saying that this is helpful to you? It's not just about syncing what we're doing to what's being tested?
Correct.
Right.
And I think that's a culture that the departments have built, and that the grade levels in the earlier years have built, and then we're just trying to study, because they changed the test in the middle a little bit on us, we're trying to recreate our longitudinal trend line, but I think we've gotten really good at just the practice of, here's what this year's test tells us, and responsibly moving forward.
So we can track our students through data collection and evaluation, especially those lower 25%, to show growth and development in three, four, five, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, correct?
Their first growth score at fourth grade, yes.
Okay?
Yep.
So then we go to 10th grade, and we again do the test, we do get data on these students, and we do see what progression they've had, probably from eighth to 10th, but then after that, we don't test anymore. So how do we then formulate the progression of those last two years from a standard? I hate to use the terminology standard, state standards, but then how do we, how do we evaluate that from 11th to 12th grade? And I guess then, the question would be, through the new state standards, are this, this next generation MCAS, excuse my sarcasm, is, or is there a graduation requirement involved with this whole thing as progression? I know kids do a graduation project, but I don't know if that's a graduation requirement based on the state. So I guess I'm just looking at as, from 10th, how do we statistically evaluate those kids? With the exception of just the curriculum they're taking.
So there are two answers. One is that at the state level, they have a program study that all students are expected to complete by the time they graduate. So that includes four years of math and four years of English. And so initially, it was an option to add the fourth year, and as they've, you know, sort of looked at the data, they've really reinforced that, and that's embedded in these accountability measures. We had adopted that in the shift to the class of 2013, updated graduated, graduation requirements ahead of when the state had really pushed it, because we recognize the number of students who are earning needs improvement or low proficient scores were the students most likely to test into remedial math in their college placement. And so if they have four years of math, the other thing the state is saying is that students have to have up through at least Algebra II. And a great number of our students are completing Algebra II either in 10th or 11th grade. So it's opening the door to the other accountability measure, which is increasing opportunities and exposure to advanced coursework.
Okay.
And having more of our students taking, perhaps not calculus, but we've created additional opportunities for statistics, and showing the students how statistics is also a viable math depending on the field of study moving forward. And I think our math teachers have gotten really good at explaining to the students, not just here's the content, or here's the skill, but here's the real-world application of that, and here's how it may affect you if you're not a math major in all of your different majors, like here's how it becomes a life skill as well. So, and we continue that common assessment measure year over year, even though it's not dictated by the state, we've already isolated for that cohort over time which standards they're struggling with, and so we continue to measure that.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Can I make a comment?
No, of course. Did I have to say your name?
Yes, you have to try it out. One thing I do really appreciate about the next generation MCAS is these focus on real-life applications, close connections with the core communication skills and the transfer of knowledge. And I think that seeing the test in action and really seeing what students are being asked to do, I feel that it is taking students to this next level of real, real-world application, being able to look at two different types of texts and really compare them. So, so I'm happy at where our standardized assessments are right now and where they are going. I think that you do a really great job of analyzing our data and really supporting students throughout when we have the third grade through the 10th grade. And it sounds like, Bill, I thought that was a really excellent question, and something that I'm surprised I never thought of that before, but with the 11th grade and 12th grade piece of, you know, we do, we analyze as school system, we analyze these results so much, and we look at this data to really support student learning and instruction. And when we don't have something like this, what is in place, or what are we also using? And these common assessments, the common assessments are what's going on throughout the years for students, and that's something that we're always using with students. So it's like, this is just supporting what we already know about students, and then maybe making it more explicit about these certain standards that we might not have addressed in certain common assessments. But I think, you know, in knowing that these common assessments are going throughout their whole experience, and so we're getting a really good sense of what they know and where students need some support. So that was just kind of a summary of that, but it addressed all of those things, and all great questions. Thanks.
But, you know, the teachers have to teach to standards, too. I mean, they're, they're, so we aren't throwing them to the wolves whenever they get out, are done taking MCAS tests. I mean, they're all related.
I understand that perfectly, and in the reality of education, that top group of AP and college prep kids and honors kids, realistically, they're going to find their way pretty quick. It's that bottom 25% that obviously is focused by the state assessments, that we need to obviously progress and show improvement and growth. And so when you get to 11th and 12th grade, obviously, that growth and development are really important, because one, you don't want the dropout rate, two, you want a success rate, and three, if kids go to community college or whatever they choose to do, you don't want to remediate them as they leave the building, which a lot of kids are remediating when they leave the building and go into certain areas of, whether it's the military, whether it's community college, whether it's a trade and tech school, some of those kids need the remediation of writing, reading, and additional skills. So I really get concerned with that bottom rung, not necessarily the top, because when you get kids in the AP, man, they're already looking for college credits, they're doing superbly. So, you know, yes...
And they have all these assessments that are taking place, too, with the AP.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they're getting a sense.
But, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We haven't had quite enough to think about tonight, so we have another item on our agenda.
I'm happy to skip that if you want.
No, it's a, it's a presentation of the mid-cycle of the superintendent's goals.
All right, so, thank you, glad to share with you. It is mid-cycle progress time, so I'm going to share tonight progress toward my goals. The first goal that I'm going to discuss is the district improvement goal. This was around my effective entry, essentially, the Listening and Learning Tour. I was looking to establish public trust and support through open and honest communication to create the Falmouth Student Achievement Plan that builds upon the current successes of each school, determine the social, emotional, and health needs of Falmouth students, and expand on the current strategies, and establish a clear strategy to address the school safety, security, and culture in every Falmouth school. So the key actions were, by mid-August, I would present to the school committee my entry plan. By December, I'd complete and present a report of the entry findings. By March, propose the key strategies and measures, and by April, we'll begin the implementation part. So the progress toward goal one, I did indeed submit my entry plan, and you approved that during the school committee retreat in August. I did present the first report at our December meeting. In that report, it included that I've completed 27 of the 36 strategies, the remaining nine strategies are in progress. It required additional time, we needed a more expansive review and analysis of the data, we needed more thorough classroom observations, and a more comprehensive review of the curriculum and program and offerings. The Listening and Learning Tour data reflects extensive stakeholder engagement, as I had shared. Goal two is my student learning goal. This was maintaining momentum during the transition, keeping the district moving forward during the tradition of, transition of leadership, working with principals and other district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals, focusing on the equity access opportunities for all student, Falmouth students. My key actions were, by mid-November, I would complete steps one and two of the evaluation, the educator evaluation cycle for principals and district administrators. By the end of February, complete the formant evaluation. By late spring, conduct at least three school and classroom visits for each school, and by June, complete the summative. My progress toward the goals, I have completed the educator goals for all seven principals and all five district office administrators. And to date, I'm logging at least six school visits with principals, including data discussions and classroom walkthroughs from September... and classroom walkthroughs from September through December. So I'd be exceeding that target. Very proud of that because I think we've built the relationships with the principals. We've gotten to quite routine, so twice a month, I'm in the schools. We either are doing full walkthroughs through the building, or we're targeting it on a certain grade level. We're looking at specific data. We're having discussions. It's really about that, the instructional leadership piece. And so very, very pleased with that kind of relationship that we're building. So my third goal was the professional practice goal. This was the new superintendent induction program. And of course, this was basically, you know, the strategy development, data analysis, instructional leadership that's required by that program. My key actions was that I would attend all eight day-long sessions, complete all assignments, and then I would consult with my assigned coach at least monthly. And so my progress is I've attended five sessions to date, completed all the readings and assignments, including we did an audit of all the district office initiatives. I did that with my central office team. Appreciated that. I think that was actually very informative to me to have all that input. And because we have some new team players on the district office, I think it was actually helpful for everyone and to see those interconnecting points. So I was happy to do that. And we began our school and classroom level equity walkthroughs and data review around equity. One of the things that we did decide this year to do, we, monthly, we have determined a data set. So every month with the principals and the district office team, we're kind of diving into looking at the data and always with the equity lens as well. So what I did change up because we wanted to do the, we did the high level. What we're doing is the deep dive. We're going to have a full data report by June from the year that you'll see together. So that'll be something that I kind of added in. And I've met with my coach for a total of 17 hours to date. And I've enjoyed every single minute of, every single day I have.
And we're glad we have this PowerPoint to bring with us, because we can, did you want to say something first?
No.
When we meet with our goal-setting, in our goal-setting workshop, we're going to use this and the other strategic plan information that we have. So I don't know if I told you that. So now we're telling you publicly. So you can't.
Absolutely.
You can't refuse.
I'm glad. I love it. I like us all to be aligned, right?
Yeah. So things are lining up. Just good for that. Does anybody have any comments? Just Andrea.
Yes, that was really great. And I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about what an equity walkthrough would look like and the data sets that you're talking about, more specifically where they come from. You know, we just had a whole presentation on MCAS data, but I suspected it might be different data sets that you're looking at.
Absolutely. So we, Dr. Teller, obviously, early on went through as soon as we had the MCAS data. So we reviewed that. But we're also looking at staffing data, discipline data, attendance data. We are looking at budgeting, our budgeting numbers and how the budget is, should be following the needs of the students. So looking more at that needs-based. I'm trying to think of the schedule. I'm looking at Dr. Teller to help me out with our schedule and the data. We have all the, we're looking certainly around our students with disabilities and all the data around that. So the equity piece, so bringing in the equity on all that is that, number one, so for students with disabilities that we're not over-identifying in any one category with discipline, that we're not overly disciplining in for one group, race or ethnicity, or students with disabilities, or students with English language, I'm sorry, learning, our English language learners. So we're making sure that we are, you know, kind of, we are equitable across all of our students. And, you know, that one's to answer for the walkthroughs. As we walk through, we're making sure that all students are included in activities, that there's not a disparity of how many, what students may be answering certain questions, that, you know, those questioning techniques are for, you know, everyone across. We're looking at the posters on the walls. We're looking for, to make sure that we, that we respect and celebrate the diversity of our district and that students have that opportunity to see that as well. That's what it looks like.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Kel?
I just, I think it's really important to note, I mean, this is great progress. It's so great to see exactly the things that were targeted and exactly how you've done so many of them already. It's exhausting just to think about. So, you know, it's really helpful mid-year for us to have that. And then related to it is also that the evaluation committee got to see the binder, which anyone can see. The binders are giant already. And it's, I find it really helpful to like flip through them now too, so that it's not all at the end of the year. What was the other thing? Oh, and our observations. How are we doing since it's mid-year?
We've got one.
Okay. So that everyone also gets their observations in.
I think someone's scheduled for next week, right?
Yes.
So we should have one more coming next week. But there are a lot of events happening next week.
Yes, there are.
Right? So you've got the safety.
The safety, well, that's on the 16th.
16th. And then the 17th is the coffee.
Is the coffee superintendent. And the 18th is our student advisory, the superintendent meeting.
Sounds like a good week.
The following week, we have, no, we do not have, yes, the following week. So everyone's invited to, on the 23rd, when we are our next meeting with the Partnership of the Woods Hole. And so, yeah. So we have people that went on the first tour. There's a tour on Thursday with another level of students. And so there's a few that's going on that, correct? Yeah. We got two additional. So then on that 23rd will be an opportunity as well.
It's great.
Okay. Anybody else? Now we're onto routine business, the minutes. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
I would like to correct something in here. Just about, it says follow-up items from last meeting on page three of five. And I think we're talking about the ELL summer programming. Is that right for? It wasn't an SEI summer programming, right? It was the ELL summer programming? Just to... But you did talk about some SEI PD that was going on maybe. But I don't think it was that meeting. Is that right?
Yeah. The summer programming is for ELD.
So do you want that to be ELL or do you want it to be ELD?
Yeah. It's fine.
Okay. So there's amendment to the minutes?
An edit. Yeah.
Yeah, not amendment, edit.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with one edit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstaining? Any saying no? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Yes. So I think we've already mentioned a couple of it. Here's the flyer for the safety meeting, the public safety meeting. We will, Chief Dunn and I are jointly putting this meeting on, but we are going to have several people on the panel. So that's an opportunity. That's on the January 16th. I just wanted to point out that we were asked by the Department of Children's and Families to, they're looking for additional homes for foster families. And so we are actually posting this in the schools, and we have sent this flyer out to our staff and to our families. We have coffee hour, which we just mentioned, which is on the 17th. And our next student advisory council is on the 18th. And we are going to have a reunification drill at Lawrence. So Lawrence students will be moved to the high school. Just, we did most of the schools, I guess, in the past. So we still have Lawrence and the high school. And so this year, we're going to do the reunification drill for Lawrence School. And that'll be on the 25th. But I wanted to point out, give congratulations to some Falmouth High School students. In your packet, you see some pictures of some artwork. We have the Falmouth High School art students, Emily Adams, Sophia Adelston, Tori Johnson, and Mark Caswell. They won their entries at the 2019 MAEA recognitions art show. We had other Falmouth High School students that juried into the show. And you can see the students there, Danielle Payne, Malaya Jablikki, Abigail Corner. This show is an art competition for Massachusetts high school students with an exhibition and award ceremony at the Boston Transportation Building on March 3rd. I just wanted to give a shout out for our students that did very well in this art program. Additional thing that I wanted to mention, you will be getting an invitation for an annual legislative breakfast. That is scheduled for February 8th at 9:30. You will have, there will be more information to follow. I just wanted to give a heads up at this point, from 9 to 11, it will be joint school committee members and superintendents. We are going to have a panel. And then we'll be able to hear some updates and then ask, you know, ask some questions. They're trying to put together some kind of hot topic items right now for that. And then at 11 o'clock, the legislators will join the meeting. And they are looking to share information with them that we feel is important at this time in education, as well as hear from our legislators and what they may want to share that's important on their side. So there'll be more information to follow on that.
Is this the one sponsored by the collaborative?
So the collaborative is, yes, I'm sorry. I should have pointed that. Yes. So the K-COG collaborative is sponsoring this. And, you know, both Mass and MASC being involved and invited with panel members.
If you can make that, I've gone to those. They're, it's really interesting. And when you talk about the chapter 70 funding and all those things, there's our legislators. You can complain to them or applaud them, depending upon how we.
I do believe that that is going to be one of the topics.
Yeah.
The agenda.
It's a good event.
Sure.
About the foster care now, has this, there been an increase within Falmouth of the new for, or is it within all of Massachusetts?
My understanding, locally. And so they were trying to reach out and see if we can find. So, you know, certainly from one government agency to another, we certainly want to support, you know, one another.
Is that information that we could learn about, about how many children are?
So I could certainly ask to see if they would come in and perhaps do a brief information or just do a report for us or something that we could get some. So either way, let me see if I can get something.
Take impact on our schools and families.
Yep. It does. Yep. Good follow-up.
Okay. We have a report from the assistant superintendent?
You didn't do enough?
Well, actually, so Terry, thank you for applauding the teachers, but also I should have given a shout out. So I'm remiss in that to the department heads. So Sarah Cox for English Language Arts, Carrie Fitzpatrick for Math, and Chris Brothers for Science. And also today was a half-day, right, for our elementary students? So our department heads, because they weren't hosting professional development, several of them joined in on the PD at Morse Pond. Jessica Hopkis in District, doing some work with all Morse Pond teachers. She's staying to work with grade level leaders tomorrow. And our K to 4 teachers worked in their grade level groups. Thanks to our principals for helping to facilitate some of the conversation around the Journeys Implementation and Literacy objectives. So it was a really exciting day across the district and lots of professional development and learning. So, thank you.
Today was just pre-K 6, right? And why is that, that we just have some days that are pre-K 6?
One day.
Yeah. We have one, and it was originally designated for family conferences. But because it's later in the year, the family conferences are done in October when it's a full up to grade 12 dismissal. And so they get that additional professional development day today, which would have historically been their conference day.
Okay. All right. So next is a report from the chairman, which is me, which I gave you guys a couple of bits of information that you might want to look over before our first meeting with Dorothy, which is next Tuesday. Okay? 6 o'clock. Just to remind everybody. Are there any comments or reports from committee members, subcommittee members?
I never know when to do this. I have a question.
Okay.
I don't, I can never figure out when I'm supposed to do my request for information or whatever. I'm just wondering, between USGS and Fisheries and NOAA and Coast Guard, I imagine that we have a lot of families not getting paid. And whether or not we're doing anything to make sure they know the services that they might, like connecting them to service center, connecting them to, I don't know if we're doing anything, but it would be nice to know that they were at least connected in some way, since they're maybe not able to pay their rent, or that they know about wings or that they, you know, I don't know. But it's just so it's on their radar.
Okay. Good point. Good point. Bill?
I'll bring this up because this was in our packet. Joan Woodward, I had asked last time about McLean, Gosnold, Supporting Kids Bridge Program. And I thought she did a great job in explaining everything. And one of the things that I'll throw out on the table, which I always throw out when it comes to professional development, McLean does an on-site professional development, which I absolutely love. I wish we could do that all the time. I'll just throw that at you, because I just think that's fantastic. But I really appreciated her efforts to look at numbers, to look at these programs, to see how they're supporting not only our kids, but our teachers and the whole system, and the articulation of everything, and some of the funding aspects. It was well done, and I appreciate the time you took.
It was a bit of, was a really great follow-up. Yeah. Absolutely good.
One more for follow-up. Kind of interested to see, I don't know if this would be an agenda item, or just curious to know more about the physical education waiver for the Falmouth High School, as well as the independent study. It's just something I don't really know a lot about. I've kind of heard good and bad, and I just kind of like to get to know a little bit more about the, especially the physical education waiver. Just, I don't know.
Yep. I've already requested after our wellness meeting as of yesterday to receive all that information of the number of students, the reasons they're granted, et cetera. So I was going to be able to bring that back anyway to the wellness committee, but I'll certainly share here as well.
Great. Thank you.
Terry?
And Pop? Yes?
A quick question. Goals workshop, is that here? Is this the location?
Yes, it's in this very room.
Okay.
Okay? All right. The policy's going to be chugging along tomorrow night, just, or Thursday night, just to let you guys all start agonizing ahead. We're only on C, but it doesn't look like we're going to be triple that.
B was like three times the size when we got through it. So congratulations to the committee.
Does anybody else have any other comments? Thank you, guys. This was a long night, and everybody really did a lot.
We did a lot.
We did a lot. And thanks, Sonya. That's a heck of a lot of information you have in your head there.
Yeah.
And Lori.
It's okay. She absolutely does.
They stuck it out to the end.
Yeah.
Melissa?
I just want to make a reminder that our next meeting will be January, Tuesday, January 22nd, and that's at East Falmouth Elementary School. Staying on target with visiting the schools and getting out into the schools and reaching out to the parents and guardians. And now I would like to make a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed?
You can stay.
Yeah.